We're delighted to welcome Senator Erwin. I believe he's fresh off of a day in the legislature and we probably know what that means. So, welcome Senator Erwin. President Johnson, did you want to?
So, thank you very much Senator Erwin. You're always front and center when there's something happening in Lansing that we need to be aware of, or if there's something that you feel like you may need to advocate for. So, we really appreciate you for spending your time here tonight. I see Trustee Basket has her hand up, so I'll pass it on to her before we pass it on to you.
Thank you, President Johnson. I just wanted to remind the trustees as well as the community that in Board docs, and I did send to your office Jeff, a message just to let everybody know that we have a summary provided by the MAFB of the proposed budget cuts. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say cuts, God forbid. The proposed budgets and amendments or adjustments. What's really nice about this, Senator, if you've not seen it, it gives us the governor's initial proposal, the proposed amendments from the House as well as the Senate. So, just so you know, we have that tool available should you decide to reference that. Thank you.
Awesome, wonderful. Thank you for the very generous introduction. I really appreciate it. I hope that my audio is okay. I'm not seeing anyone wave their arms, so good. Well, hello and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Tonight with an update from Lansing. I know it's been a really tough year for students and for educators and parents, as well as everybody involved in school leadership. So, I really want to thank you for your service. And you know, this whole COVID time has been very trying for many of us. Some of us have grown beards, but all of us have been struggling through, especially our school community. So, thank you. You know, as a parent of a couple of Ann Arbor Public Schools children, I also want to particularly thank the teams at Pittsfield Elementary and Scarlet. They're just amazing. My kids are really happy to be back in school and I really appreciate the teams there at Pittsfield and Scarlet, who just do a great job. So, I'm eager to hear your questions and try to answer them, or make sure that I follow up to answer them if I can't answer them immediately. So, I'm going to try to go very quickly through what's happening in Lansing right now on policy and budget, and just kind of hit the highlights and then hopefully there will be some questions that we can get more into the details. You know, in Lansing, we're always dealing with policy and budgets. I'm going to spend most of my time talking about budget, but just a little bit on some policy issues, just to you know, kind of wet your beak at your interest in these kinds of issues. I've been working for a long time with folks all across the state and some of the trustees here, and I really want to thank Trustee Kelly for her help on the dyslexia package that we're working on right now. We've got a package of bills that is bipartisan, that really focuses on improving literacy by focusing in on some of the phonetic awareness issues and decoding skills that young readers really need. It picks up on some work that has happened in some other states that has been very, very successful. And I'm really excited about Senate Bill 830 through 833, and the opportunity to really piggyback on some of the systems we already have in the schools to make sure that we're catching some of those kids who are falling through the cracks because of their, you know, because they have some sort of characteristics of dyslexia in their early learning. I'm also working on a package of bills that is related to school discipline. I think there's really bills on some of the work that we did back when I was in the House to end zero tolerance and some of the great work that Ann Arbor Public Schools has done under the leadership of this board to reduce suspensions and expulsions. We know that this is a problem across our state and it is a problem that really hits different communities differently. And I would encourage anyone who hasn't seen the documentary Push Out to watch that. It's a really interesting look at how particularly Black and Brown students are often mischaracterized as being older than they are and are often on the receiving end of discipline that is not appropriate to whatever it is they did, is not geared towards keeping students in school. That's really, I think, the goal of the legislation we're working on is to keep kids in school by making sure that when kids are facing long-term suspension or expulsion, that they get more due process, that they get more access to the documents and accusations that are going to be against them, that the hearing be helped done by an independent hearing officer, and that there's an opportunity for an appeal. So, we're trying to build some of those systems in, what I would really call some of the best practices that some of the great districts across the state are already doing, and make that mandatory so that there are less kids who get pushed out of the classroom. So, those are a couple of policy issues we're working on. I'm also reintroducing my teacher tax credit bill so that our educators give a tax credit for the money that they take out of their family budget to put into our classrooms. But, as I said a moment ago, most of what's going on in Lansing about education is all about the budget. And I just want to start by saying that the discussion around K-12 budgeting is particularly complicated and confusing right now. And the reason is because we're not actually having one conversation about school funding. We're actually having at least three, right? And each one of these conversations is super complex. But what I mean by that is that, one, we have the discussion about next year's budget. The state's fiscal year runs October 1st to September 30th, and now is the normal time that we would hear the governor's executive recommendation and then the legislature would start putting out its kind of initial budget and then we negotiate hopefully towards a budget passage in June. We certainly don't want to get a situation like we had in 2019 where that stretches all the way into September and makes it very, very difficult for you on the plane. So, that's one conversation. That's a huge and important conversation. There's a lot of media about that. Then there's a separate conversation about a supplemental bill package that relates to the federal relief bill that was passed in December. So, there was a federal relief bill passed in December with almost $3 billion for K-12 and the legislature is still dealing with dispersing those dollars and creating rules for where those dollars would go and how they'll be governed. Then in addition to that, there's also the discussion about the American Rescue Plan. And there's about $3.7 billion statewide for K-12 in the American Rescue Plan, which you know, I'm trying to call the Biden bill. So, you know, those three different conversations are all happening at the same time and it makes it very confusing. So, let me just start with the supplemental budget discussions happening around the federal relief package that was passed in December, because that's the furthest along and that's the one that we're dealing with right, while we're dealing with all three of them at the same time. So, the, so what happened was, I think you all know, there was a bill passed and signed by the governor, a two-bill package that related to K-12 funding, House Bills 4047 and 4048. Those bills were passed, it allocated about $2 billion of the federal money and it allocated most of those dollars toward the districts that had enough Title I students that the district was sort of like a Title I qualifying district. However, the state added $300 million out of the school aid fund and added that to a small part of the federal relief dollars because 90% of it had to go to the Title I districts, the other 10% the state had flexibility. So, they took that 10% plus $300 million from the school aid fund and what they did is they turned them into equalization payments so that each school district would get at least $450 per pupil. However, this was the bill that they attached the 20 hours of in-person instruction requirement to. And that has been a subject of a lot of back and forth. And I just want to go into the detail on that a little bit because obviously it's relevant to Ann Arbor Public Schools. In that bill, the law that was passed and signed by the governor, what it says is that in order for these districts to get the equalization payment, that $450 per pupil, they had to offer at least 20 hours of in-person instruction for all students each week, starting by March 22nd. Now, what you may notice is that right around March 22nd and the next couple of weeks was really when Michigan was experiencing its peak COVID cases in this latest wave. And there were a ton of schools that were shutting down either whole districts or they were shutting down schools, or sometimes they were having cohorts stay out or grades. In any event, there were, there was, across the state, there were a lot of different districts that were taking some sort of response to close either whole schools or districts. And as a result, those districts started to ask, well, if we're not offering 20 hours of in-person instruction to all students each week, are we going to lose out on our money? You know, essentially, that issue is still unresolved. Dr. Rice, the superintendent of the state at Michigan Department of Education, he basically exchanged letters with the chair of the appropriations committee in the House, Republican Representative Albert, and through that exchange of letters, decided on his own that he would hold fast to the March 22nd deadline, but that they would look away around the requirement that the in-person instruction be 20 hours for every student each week. And so, that has led to even more confusion about, you know, how that's going to exactly be administered. You know, I've certainly gotten involved and tried to say that, you know, we've been punishing our districts for a long time across the state of Michigan. Michigan is 50th out of 50 states in increasing funding for K-12 education over the last 20 years. And you know, I want to make sure that all the districts in the state get the money they deserve. And so, just this week, in another supplemental budget bill that is a trailer to this one and that allocates the balance of the federal money from December, I was able to get an amendment to the budget to clarify that language a little bit. And it just basically said that, now, if you can document that you're experiencing a real public health circumstance, either you had a variant in your area that was virulent or you had high case counts and the school district and the board actually takes action to, you know, make that official, that for those periods of time, the 20 hours would be waived. So, that was, I think, a good thing in the Senate. However, in the House, just today, there was a supplemental trailer bill that was kind of the analog to Senate Bill 216, which was House Bills 4419 and 4421. And so, just this afternoon in the House, a similar budget supplemental was passed, 96 to 11. So, it had quite a bit of support that basically says that it changes the date to April 12th, so it doesn't start counting on March 22nd. It would change it to start counting on April 12th. And it would basically say that if you were offering 25 hours, you get all of your money. If you were offering 20 hours, you get 75% of the money. If you're offering 15 hours, you get 50% of the money. And if you are, if our 10 hours of less of in-person schooling, you'll get 25% of the payment. This is obviously an administrative nightmare and this is the approach that the House is taking. And you can see that it's very different than the approach that the Senate is taking. Because on the Senate side, you know, I sort of went to my colleagues and said, hey, look, you've got school districts that have closed down because of outbreaks. You know, let's try to make this, you know, simpler and fair. Whereas the House, I think, has made it even more complicated and they're moving the goalposts around. So, you can see that there's a very different approach in the House and Senate and we're going to have to work that out over the course of the next, you know, hopefully a couple of weeks and get something on the governor's desk that she can sign that distributes the rest of the dollars from December. Okay. So, in addition to that, we have a conversation that is just starting about the American Rescue Plan and what we're going to do with the $3.7 billion that is coming in for K-12. I expect that to be stretched out not just over one year, but over a few years. And that conversation is really just getting started. And then the third conversation that I wanted to update you about is what we're talking about with respect to next year's fiscal budget. And so, as Trustee Basket pointed out, there's a great tool that you can look at that'll give you, you know, the numbers themselves. But at the very highest level, the governor is recommending $15.8 billion for school aid across the state of Michigan. And the bill that we just reported out of the Senate, so which is sort of like the first step from the Senate Republicans, is a $15.7 billion budget. So, you're looking at a difference of about $100 million. And the difference starts to show up a little more when you start to get into the details. And once again, the same thing that we've seen for the last two years. The governor's approach is relying more on the weighted funding formula that the School Finance Research Collaborative identified or recommended, that basically allocates more dollars towards at-risk youth, towards special education, and says basically that these are the areas where we have the biggest holes between what's needed and what we're providing. And so, the governor has proposed putting more money into those lines. Whereas the Senate-passed budget that was just passed yesterday has a larger per pupil allotment. And so, that's really the fundamental difference between the governor's proposal and the current proposal coming out of the Senate. You know, the governor has more dollars put into enrollment stabilization to basically stabilize payments to districts that are going to see a large enrollment drop next year. Whereas, once again, the Senate Republicans have put more into the per pupil. Just to give you an idea of the range, the governor's proposal would be an increase of $82 per pupil for Ann Arbor Public Schools and the Senate Republicans would be $125 per pupil. Another thing that I think is very significant in this budget is that both the governor's recommendation and the bill that we just reported out of the Senate has a substantial increase for Great Siret readiness program reimbursements. Basically, a 10% increase from $7,250 to $8,275 per pupil for our GSRP students. And I think that's a really positive sign that shows that there is some bipartisan coming together around increasing the allotment to early childhood education. And so, you know, those are the big pieces in the budget and you know, some of the policy things I'm working on now. And I would just want to close by thanking the board again for welcoming me to give an update. And I was happy to come to your meetings and talk to you about what's happening in Lansing and, you know, hear your questions. I expect that in addition to being interesting information maybe for the listeners, they also give me an idea of, you know, what the board is focused on, what the board is considering, and maybe how I can be most helpful to you in Lansing.
Excellent. Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you Senator Erwin. Definitely appreciate the overview. Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Basket.
Senator Erwin, Jeff, I can't remember the bill number, but is there an update to the legislation regarding exempting the numbers of people who can gather together around the graduation and graduation celebration? Do you have any new news on that?
Yeah, perhaps my news is new, I'm not sure. But we did pass a bill out of the Senate yesterday that, you know, basically says that, as I understand it, in-person graduation can't be prohibited, basically. So, it would say that, you know, that would not be something that a public health order could cover and that, you know, in-person graduation would have to be allowed.
So, I was just going to give you my thoughts on that, Jeff. I understand the intent there. It's been a horrible year. Everybody wants to be able to have the opportunity of getting together. My concern is when we allow the legislators outside, you know, the school decisions are ours as a board, meant to be at the local, at the local level. When we allow, when the legislators make these blanket statements, you're, you're, I don't want, how do I say? You're not staying in your lane, if I may. We have been working at the local level, as I'm sure every district has, regarding the celebrations and what makes sense. To take that decision-making ability, I just wonder if that started a slippery slope, so to speak. I mean, what else are you going to take or prevent from us from doing or insisting that we do in the future? So, my two cents worth, of course, I speak just for me and not for my colleagues.
Yeah, well, just a brief response to that. I mean, I think the reason why this is happening is the same reason why some of my colleagues are making a lot of noise about landscaping back in last spring and the same reason why they're making a lot of noise about high school sports recently. Because the polling is leading them in that direction. They see this as an opportunity to score political points. Almost everything I see in Lansing from the other side, particularly from certain members, is meant to, you know, have a political effect and to tear down the government. And one of the things that, you know, I'm constantly trying to work with folks on their side about, and having some success, I think, is to say, hey, let's put away the long knives in the chamber here and try to get something done for the people. There'll be plenty of time for us to go, you know, try to cut each other's hearts out next fall.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Dupree.
Thank you so much for coming out, Senator Erwin. Really do appreciate it. I know you only kind of briefly touched on the discipline, the school discipline package you were talking about. Do you mind expanding on that just a little bit for those of us who need to know a little bit more details about what direction you were going in with it and how it would help our students?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, you know, I've been working with, you know, a few groups, statewide groups on this, Student Advocacy Center, ASIL of Michigan, Street Democracy. Those have been some of the folks who I've been consulting, as well as, you know, school management groups have all seen this language. And I introduced it last fall as well. We're getting ready to reintroduce it here pretty soon. And what the bills do really is just codify some of the best practices that many districts are already doing. So, for instance, it requires, one, the district identify an independent hearing officer, the person who's ultimately going to be the one who decides on these disciplinary issues. And the person cannot be the person who issues disciplinary order in the first place. That's one of the problems we see in some places where the person who's doing the review is the same person who needed out the discipline. That's not independent, that's not appropriate, that's just not the way things should be. And so, you know, we're saying, you know, look, you got to identify that person. They have to be independent, they can't be part of the disciplinary chain normal. And we're creating an automatic right of appeal. And we're also requiring certain things within the process. Like, so for instance, anybody who is accused of doing something in the school that might, you know, result in some sort of disciplinary action, I think deserves to see all the allegations against them and all the evidence that's going to be presented against them in the hearing at least 48 hours before the hearing starts. There should never be a circumstance where a kid is walking in, you know, with their parent or without, maybe with an advocate, and all of a sudden, you know, there's paperwork drawn on and they're writing the hearing that they don't have time to prepare for. That's just, that's just not fair. That doesn't give them their due process. And so, then finally, you know, another piece that we're putting in there, which is frankly, just a little bit of foot stomping because this is already the law, is that districts who do issue long-term suspensions or expulsions are still required to provide educational resources to those students. And we're putting it right there in that part of the law that says, no, you're going to have to send home homework packets, you're going to have to continue to work with the student. And, you know, then we also require that, as part of the hearing, they consider the seven factors. That's another sort of core element to it. And those seven factors are already supposed to be, you know, part of the consideration process, but this really makes it explicit.
Thank you so much, Senator Erwin.
Thank you.
Right, trustees, any other questions? All right, I actually have two. One's very quick. First one, you talked about a documentary. Did you say that was called Push Out?
Push Out.
Okay, got it. Perfect. And then my next question is about this House, the House Bills 4419 and 4421 that you talked about. You may have answered my question when you talked about political points. So, I think, you know, that may be part of it. But I'm wondering if we could be kind of a fly on the wall to hear more about what the rationale that these representatives are giving when they talk about funding schools based, funding schools today based on past performance or past provision of in-person instruction, when schools had no opportunity to adjust or to even factor in, you know, those specific laws? Can you speak to the rationale that they're giving for why they think this makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think the rationale is pretty straightforward. You know, there's a lot of folks, and I would consider myself one of those folks, who really thinks that, you know, schools are essential and we want kids to be in school and we want, you know, school to be in person. And, you know, I just think that the problem is they're approaching it in a very ham-handed way that doesn't consider all the details, doesn't consider the importance of, you know, local factors and labor contracts and all the different things that have to be considered. You know, so for instance, you know, in doing this, in some of these different amendments, you know, they don't even consider things like sick leaves or, you know, maternity leave or paternity leave or, you know, those types of things that come up in the school environment. They're writing amendments to the law that say things like literally, the teacher of record must be in the classroom for this many hours or else. And it's just not very thought out, right? They've got this impetus, they think, gosh, we think in-person is, you know, the way it should be and so, we're going to, you know, do what we can to try to push it that way. But they're just not doing it in a considered thoughtful, effective way. I mean, one of the things that we've been saying to them for the last, I don't know, at least six months, maybe nine, is, you know, you want things to be back to normal? Let's stop voting against masks. Let's start getting these vaccines out. Let's get the federal money, you know, in the hands of the people that need it so that, you know, they can get these vaccines delivered. Let's start promoting, you know, vaccine uptake in more conservative communities. I mean, I can't tell you how frustrating it is to see these people vote against masks and then, you know, try to say everything should just be back to normal, right? And here they are talking about, you know, well, employers can't find people to work and so, it's really just because of unemployment. No, it's because of childcare, it's because of people's needs, like, you know, that come first. And so, once again, it's just not thoroughly thought out, you know, emotional lawmaking. And I think they're also trying to seize on some politics here. But, you know, one of the things that is most frustrating is when they set these goalposts that are in the past and that are constantly moving and that don't consider all these little details. And then on top of it, on top of all that, when I was in appropriations committee this week, I made a motion to diminish the per pupil allotment to cyber schools. This is something I've done since I was back in the House. I think that if you've got, you know, a really high teacher-student ratio and you don't have a building and, you know, you're not paying your, into the long-term costs of MIPsers or anything else, that you shouldn't get a full per pupil allotment. These cyber schools are out there getting a full per pupil allotment for what they do. And it's just, it's amazing level of cognitive dissonance that these same people on one hand can say, you know, it has to be in-person and, you know, we're going to, you know, punish districts that aren't. But yet, on the other hand, we have to give this full allotment to these cyber schools and these cyber schools do a great job. I mean, in the same meeting, they're saying both of these things. And so, you know, look, I want, you know, class to be in-person. I want that to happen as quickly as we can safely get it done. It's one of the reasons why we work so hard on vaccines and everything else. But, you know, you have to be considerate of what it takes to make that happen and what you have to ask of people and what you need to do to support those people.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for your time. Thanks for, not even just your time tonight, but the time, oh, Trustee Kelly is, please jump in. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. I seem to have forgotten how to raise my hand. Thank you for being here, Senator. I'm curious whether you are hearing any folks interested in challenging the bills, you know, from an ex post facto, you know, perspective? To have legal or financial consequences of something apply retroactively? We have some pretty fundamental principles against that in our legal system. I'm curious if you're, if you're hearing from groups who will challenge any of these bills that seek to retroactively punish districts that, because of places like Ann Arbor, wouldn't have been prudent to open and the number of hours that they're, they were proposing.
Yeah, I haven't heard that, actually. You know, I know that there are a number of districts across the state that are either impacted or maybe impacted by the budget language that we're talking about. And I think there's a lot of folks that are frustrated with the moving goalposts and the changing rules. But I haven't heard anybody, you know, raise that legal question yet, until you did.
Okay, thank you.
That's an excellent question that we might want to talk a little bit more about, for sure. Well, as I was saying, Jeff, thank you so much for the time that you spent with us tonight, but really the time that you spent. Oh, did you have something?
President Johnson, I think Dr.
Thank you, President Johnson. I just wanted to share publicly, and Senator Erwin, I've said it to you privately, but I just, I see you in our community leaders and our state leaders' meetings. Our trustees are not always able to be in those particular meetings with the governor's team and others. And I just want to thank you publicly for your advocacy. You have never failed and you are appropriately aggressive and also appropriately innovative and creative in trying to work across the aisle to get something done for Ann Arbor Public Schools. You've been in meetings with me with the state superintendent and just really, I know you must be weary because I see you fighting this fight all the time. And I appreciate, and I know the board appreciates. And I just wanted to say that publicly because so often, those kinds of conversations and discussions and interactions occur behind closed doors and I'm not sure that the community really recognizes all the way to getting vaccines prioritized for our teachers, all, just all the way around, vaccines into underserved neighborhoods in our community. You've been a gladiator during this COVID time for all of us and we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Basket.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. You kind of beat me to the punch on acknowledging Jeff's advocacy and support of us. But I want to go even further and say, you know, we are very fortunate in our But I want to go even further and say, you know, we are very fortunate in our district that our legislators really practice what they preach in terms of public education. Jeff's already acknowledged his children's school, and I can say, I've seen, you know, Jeff there at the door picking up his child when I've been there to pick up ours. So, you know, he's an active dad. Again, he practices what he preaches and, you know, supports their schools to, to the hilt. And I think we even saw each other at a couple fundraisers, Jeff. So I just wanted to say thank you. It's wonderful to have legislators that support public education. It's even better when they're actual parents of the district and we get to interact. Jeff is very accessible as all of our legislators. Again, this is not common in other districts, and just wanted to appreciate that. And it'd like some feedback from the trustees later, as well as the viewing public about having our legislators to our meetings, because sometimes it's hard for the community to get to you and try to schedule a separate time. So again, thank you, Jeff. You were kind of like our inaugural legislator visit to the board, so thank you for making it happen. And considering, I also want to thank you for your flexibility in the schedule, because you weren't supposed to be on for another 15 minutes, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, trustee Baskett and Dr. Swift said pretty much what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
But it's all, it's all good. But, you know, you, Jeff Erwin will reach out with a telephone call to ask if he can be of assistance. That's what I, that's what I will say. And I think that's going above and beyond, and I appreciate that personally. So thank you so much. We would love to have you back, and thanks for all your support.
Yeah, thank you all, and I know that it's incredibly long, you guys have very long meetings often, so I won't take up too much more of your time, but I just want to close by thanking you all again for, for your service and for sticking with it through this, you know, tough time, to all the educators out there, to all the AAPS students and to all the parents. You know, K-12 education is the most important thing that the state does. And I just want to thank you all for staying engaged through this difficult time. You know, sometimes there are, you know, disagreements and, and, you know, it's, it's tough, but that's because we all care so much about our kids and the future of our communities.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you.